I can, yes. So I would remind everyone that your microphone is right here, so if you're kind of moving around, it's gonna sound like a swishing sound. And right now, your, your, all of your microphones are live. If you want to... Put yourself on mute if you want to.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Where's that?
Uh-oh. Now it says leave, wait a minute.
So there's some...
Anywhere else?
Anywhere else?
Yeah.
Still says leave.
There it is.
Where was it?
Tunnel right.
Ah.
Okay. All right, you're live too Karen.
Yep, and so you should be able to hear me now.
Yep. Okay, now.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome everybody to the June meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustment. And before we get started, I have a lengthy document I must read before we start any of these video Zoom meetings. And I'll go ahead and start. As Chair of the Laconia zoning board of adjustment, due to the Corona nine, the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with the Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to the executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video or electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this meeting. Where all members of the board will have the ability to communicate and the public will have access to watch the live YouTube video at https://www.youtube.com backslash Laconia New Hampshire. Listen to this meeting through dialing the following phone number: Or participate with the Zoom app. Webinar ID 81093610695. With a webinar password of 143959. B, providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided on the city of Laconia's website. At... C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert, to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 524-3877 extension 249 or email at planning@laconianh.gov. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. D, that's what we'll do. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So, roll call please.
And Steve Boger.
Here, I'm at present at the meeting.
Lori Gibbs.
Present at the meeting.
Gail Ober.
Here remotely, no one in the room.
Roland Nettie.
Here, present at the meeting.
Mike Foot.
Here, present at the meeting.
And Mike Delvaughn has not yet arrived.
Okay. So with that, we have a quorum. We have four members here, which will provide for special conditions for how the voting is done.
You have time. Because Gail's on.
Oh, that's right. It's that visual thing, hey Gail. So, we do have a full board, and so the voting is normal. And with that, we'll go to the next thing on the agenda, which is the minutes. Everybody get a chance to review the minutes and...
Yes.
Anybody have any additions, subtractions? Changes whatsoever to the minutes?
The addition to the change that Karen had indicated. No advice, Karen?
No, that's the only change.
That's the only change.
That was the only change. Okay, and that was at 8:15 PM with no one to speak for against the application. As both closed public hearing. G Ober made a motion to approve application for a special exception from Article 5, Section 235. They've permitted here to allow fuel wholesale bulk storage and sales.
Correct.
So that was the modification which was added into the minutes. Do we accept the minutes as changed?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the change?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor, Michael?
In favor.
Gail? I couldn't hear you, Gail. Roland?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Steve, yes. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and move on. We have accepted minutes, extensions, continue of public hearings. Not quite sure it was a continue as it was just moved to the next meeting, as we did hear it as of yet, so this is for the first reading and whatnot. This is application 2020-0021 SE. 72 Church Street, special exception. Applicant is requesting an application, is requesting a special exception to allow for boarding room lodging house. The applicant, please come forward, explain to us what you would like and...
Okay, okay.
So what's led up to this request?
Um, excuse me. And hear him.
So, in doing so, this property has been... I guess in a dire straits situation, might ask for the full ten, but when you look at the layout of the building, there's one particular area that was just quite difficult to describe, but it's currently listed as a conference room. That should be main. And the reason why is all of the space on the right hand side accommodates real bedrooms. Either a free showers, free pool bathrooms, more than the space to accommodate right now when we lay out of our six beds. So, that's what's led up to this request. We have a building that will be left unutilized, no capital, and a business situation there. Everybody suffered along with that, but this is just a... And I would come up with COVID, this is when government released hundreds of millions of dollars about two years ago to accommodate the suboxin effect of the program. A lot of those strong falls that we used to get. A lot of those clients have taken the suboxin effect of making groups. And so that caused us to send this guy slowly, but now the president's counterfeited. Guys down to what now is 30, 40. So, you know, we can build those beds back up. We are leaving calls now, but there's no way for us to generate more leverage. So, there's no use for the building at all other than to build a gym, which is very necessary as part of our program. So, that's what's led up to the request for the meeting. I'm getting to, I suppose you'd like to reach the points of concern on the actual application. So, the use requested is specifically authorized in this chapter. To be answered that question, yes. This will allow the ruling houses and many other types of structure properties in the area. Including surrounding, entire neighborhood. The building and the neighborhood is surrounded with all of the same similar type of houses. They all allow a lot of these are those kinds of houses. So, the other three buildings that are on the side from this building are utilized for the same exact purpose. So it's certainly keeping with the neighborhood because we own four quarters of, or three, two quarters of that neighborhood and the houses that were packed. So we're in keeping with our own current use of that surrounding us. Requested use will, will not create undue traffic congestion or undue leak. Yet, compare pedestrian safety. Again, flyer here, Karma Cafe itself, we built in three hours. You'd have thirty seats, you'd have at least a turn of ten tables per hour, which would be ten cars per hour in eight hour day without the yoga studio. So you would have parking company going all day long. That is all gone, so all of the safety concerns, all of the usage concerns, all of the things that would involve guests on this have been brought down, I would say, ninety percent from what we were in traffic down to personal use. And that's it. So that is, B, also requested use will not create undue traffic congestion and undue compare pedestrian safety. Talk about cars, talk about everything closing down. Requested use will not overuse any public water drainage or sewer systems or any other municipal systems. Nor will be any significant increase. Somewhat. Might have to put my glass. Is that okay? Good. Oh my God.
No, I know the feelings.
Okay, so the requested use will not include any public water drainage or sewer systems or any other municipal system. So it will be any significant increase in stormwater runoff on businesses and properties. With all the businesses closed, there will be at least ninety percent plus less than the traffic daily on the same regarding water sewage. Our water sewer usage, your kitchen, restaurant customers, all that goes away. So break down way below what the standard is, what's current with this change of use. The request will not be excessive to manage police, fire, school, solid waste, and social services, same answer as above. Ten people maximum in the building. There's forty plus parking spaces on site, you have about ten in the lot, plus in front about fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, and back. And then you have all the parking, which I know that's plenty. That's still about twenty-five parking spaces for ten people on that spot. So we're well over the requirement for any type of living condition for an apartment building in the area. Any special provisions could use asset forces captured or fulfilled. There are no special provisions, provisions simply, food house, boardhouse, rental property, whatever you want to. Requested use will not create hazards to health, safety, general welfare of the public or be detrimental to the use of or out of care to the adjacent neighborhood. That is certainly true, same as the job, and the flow of public persons will be cut by about ninety percent. And if, you know, when you're in the restaurant business, you always run the risk of food poisoning. So, we're in a much better position to say, clear, without having restaurants that was in some of those things that could or would apply naturally to this restaurant business go away. The proposal is agent appropriate for the requested use. It mirrors all of the surrounding rentals and houses, so there is really nothing about the request that is out of character with the neighborhood and what surrounds the building, the apartments in the area. Requested, requested uses inconsistent with the spirit and intent of the catcher and disaster plan. It isn't, because the disaster plan allows the right types of housing in that area. So all that being said, there was a discussion on signage. I'd like to address that. There's a couple things that go along with it, that are a secret move. All signs, I think that all signage should be changed. I think the wall sign for the comic, I think it should be removed, the building should be... And that should just go away. So the walls should become a clear, flat wall in the future tenant. Let's, we have to, we have to go on the assumption here that, let's say the building is five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty years, if we keep going and run high expectations of like, somebody at some day is gonna buy that building. And if we take all the signage away, we are lowering the value of that building and a retailer's opportunity to properly advertise itself. So the wall sign, I think, is even enough to take away because the city has it. We need enough signage to allow that to go back up. The other signs, first of all, the one-to-one fitness is in use for JP, who has five clients or so and trains in our internal. So what I think we should do is maybe like close to the public on one of, the Karma Cafe should say, close to the public, Riverbank House Culinary Training Center. And we can do that on the feeder boards that are there. The yoga signs, I'm not opposed to taking it down if it's requirements that you need to do. However, I would be more inclined to request that we remove the face with Riverbank House logo that that is our corporate headboard, because that's where all our administrative offices are. That would at least identify the logo of Karma Cafe in, which I think is a fair ask, without asking for additional signage. What it does is protects a potential future buyer, again, whether it's ten years or so from now, decided to buy over sign by any strategy that's good. So removing, I think, detrimental to future sale of buildings, whether it was ever used by them. And again, yoga sign should go, close to the public. Nice logo and the Riverbank House, if you've ever seen that website, very attractive. So we'll look through it. Karma Cafe has the space to say, close to the public and Riverbank House Culinary Training Center. And one-to-one fitness should be there for the sake of JP has his own personal business there. He is one in eight years of leading business, followed by one getting his personal training license and trained. So I don't see that building to, or for, that you are, you know, jump on toward this. But even if they did, he has about five clients, he works for Riverbank House, which is the resident community. What he does there is one side, but it doesn't help the public record with any one personal thing. But that karma is never going to buy him.
Okay, just a question. So Karma Cafe is gonna close.
It is closing.
And that's where you're gonna reconfigure and put the...
Will be two rooms in there. There could be four, but up to the right wall, I believe, the right wall we shot at the start. The right wall we shot at the start of this, that kind of career. Just for the simplicity of, we don't necessarily have to build a bed right now. And it's costly, so probably, we need to reserve the right later because we do expect recovery, like everybody's going through recovery market, so that all our businesses can back to normalcy. So you can have four there in back of that, which I believe might be called the rec center. And there may not be a room, two beds in that, which are very back on that triangle shaped room, is a single bed. That is pretty much all of what would probably ever occur for bedrooms. So that's a total of seven. So if we ask for eight, just in case two beds could go in that triangle room, which it has room, or this is an awkward room, to put two beds in, that would give us a total of eight. And to do anything else on the other side of the building wouldn't make sense for the residents regardless of whether you need to, or not to. There's no showers and bathrooms, which are wrong. Right now, where all the bedrooms are positioned, there are showers and bathrooms right there. So there's, you know, there's no inconvenience, there's no structural change necessary for accommodating sleeping quarters. They simply have everything right there as they would have a wall apartment.
Now, you mentioned the Karma Cafe sign. Is it the Karma Cafe training, culinary training also? Or is Karma just for the cafe? The reason why I'm asking is, would it be better just if that was approved and gone in that direction? Culinary, I think, is right, I think where cafes should come off. For the river, changing... Whatever that ninety is, because one looks like the negative saying, I want to put a Karma Cafe closed.
Yeah. Get rid of the word cafe or, or just write Karma Cafe, Riverbank House Culinary Training Center.
Right, because then it's still, I'd say, will reserve what you're trying to accomplish.
I don't mean to interrupt, but lift your microphone up, Gail can't hear you.
Is that better?
That's gonna be that little...
It's, it's the paper rustling.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Gail?
It's all the rustling of the paper.
Okay, that's everybody else's paper because I think somehow we need to mute everybody and just unmute what we talk.
Yeah, because I haven't heard a word he said, so I'm forced to abstain from this because I missed it all.
Okay, and can we get you to turn yourself up just a hair, Gail, on your microphone?
Uh, okay.
All right. I wished you would have said something earlier.
I did, I had to text message Karen.
Okay, so the left side is where your current gym is now and stuff like that. So that's on Messer Street. Right. And that's on the Messer Street entrance. And then the other one's from the Court Street. Because it has, Dane, because it has two entrances, does it fall under two different, because it's two different functions? Three, well, it's two fronts on two different streets.
What's the question, Steve?
Yes. Very necessary, so both main streets are then one and a part of mine from that. There are multiple entrances on the front of the building as well, so realistically, with now every entrance into that building, there's three on the front, one on the side on Messer Street, and one in the back.
But the one on the back's not for general use, that's for...
Basically use that as a walk through.
Yeah, for the campus, it's, it's...
The guys that go over and play volleyball, if they don't walk all around the city block, as you said, last year, because that was always a common area back to the days when it was sent shots and beyond. So it's more like a center hallway that separates the two parcels. So two parts of the building on one side, the resident, the other side that is resident use for yoga, general offices and conference room.
All right. Do we have, yes, Mike?
All right, just for clarification, Randy.
Wait a minute. Can, let's unmute Mike.
There you go.
Go.
Just for clarification, on the application here, we're seeing ten bedrooms requested. Are there really ten bedrooms, or are we looking at nine, maybe ten beds?
It's beds, not bedrooms.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just...
And I currently count eight. And he said a possibility. I think I count eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Nine.
Then I'm counting.
Yeah, I counted nine, too.
One, two, three, four, five, six, six baths, six baths and a bath and a bed some kind. The wording's running together. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'm gonna open it up to the public at this time, Dane.
Okay.
I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody would like to speak for or against this application, please acknowledge and we'll bring you up and allow you to speak.
For those on the, under the attendees, if you'd like to speak on this case, please hit the raise your hand at the, at the bottom.
Let the record indicate is, I'm looking at Dane to make sure, but I see no one wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I close it to the public and bring it back to the board for any other questions. Now... So, in, in making these modifications, I'm happy you're... So, in, in making these modifications, I'm happy you're looking at the future as well as the present and the value of the building itself. And so I'm assuming, and I hate to assume anything, is that the building itself is not gonna be modified to the point where it couldn't be unmodified and return back to business if so.
The commercial kitchen will remain intact, everything stays intact. The only one change is that one demise involved in the Karma Cafe itself that was open to two beds up north.
Okay.
Only real structural change in that.
And that's a soft structural change or a hard?
Well, it would be like taking this space, this is actually on the side.
Yeah.
It would be taking, putting a wall with a door.
Yeah. It's something that's non-permanent, it can. Okay. Any other questions? There being none, any closing comments?
Just that, you know, I, I know that, you know, in a special permit variance, any special request of financial hardship cannot necessarily take into consideration. But what I can want to recognize is the fact that the system trend has drawn down. That this building has no deal rate generating revenue that I would put in there. Therefore, all of its costs, which is about $6,000 a month depending on the time of year, is then put back on to the community running the business, which, you know, makes us cost more to do business. Because that has to be, that, that has to be paid for somehow.
I do have one question. Are these beds gonna be filled with general public? Or are they gonna be filled with graduates from?
The goal is graduates. It could be guys that should be coming in early. We haven't got a final determination on that yet. The goal, because of, first of all, those actually like the Karma Cafe that those are a water front. That's pretty nice. So I believe that we're gonna try to utilize those with the guys who've gone through five months and then looking for, to stay. Because a lot of guys do stay with us for a year or more. So we're gonna try to utilize that, the guys that wanna be on campus, close to their peers, and the guys that they got well with, but they've gone through the program.
I just couldn't blow into town and be Joe Blow and say...
That would never happen. We can't, we could never be there. That would completely jeopardize the whole business model.
Okay, that's what I was, that was more of what I was asking, you know, general public. Okay, so any last comments? Done? Done? With Adam, we'll close it to the public totally and bring it to the board for discussion. And remember, when you talk, we have to unmute the talk. Any comments from anybody?
No, I just think it's a reasonable use for that particular section of the property. Particularly related to graduates of the program.
I would like to see if the motion is to approve that the... Can we condition it, Dane, to die if, at the purchase and sell agreement with another owner?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. I would like to see that, the boarding house part, that he seeks die. If he sells, it still can be the commercial sale side and stuff like that.
But it was sold with the same use. In other words, the whole place was sold out, so it was a different, you have a support. It's a delay that if it sells, that it's a kind of abuse, that it's changed. This would be for the rent, or the way, that way it doesn't create hardship for...
Yeah.
Yeah, I see what he means. It's another rehab.
I see it, that's, I'm just looking around. Can we? We can do that, right? On a change of use, if the use changes from this, as long as it stays with this rehab type.
Right, I think the intention that you're getting at is if if Randy was to sell to another entity, and they wanted to open it up to the public as opposed to graduates or participants in the program, then that would not be allowed. But if another entity took over the business or established a new business there, and they were going to be using it in the same way that he's using it, in terms of clients and/or graduates, then that would, that would be okay, and that, that's fine.
Okay, so... I would agree with that also, so... All right. A motion, would anybody like to?
I'll give it a go. I'd like to make a motion to approve application ZO 2020-0021SE, special exception for 72 Church Street to convert part of the building, the building fronting on, portion of the building fronting on Church Street into a boarding house for ten beds maximum. The use requested is specifically authorized in this chapter. It's in the UC zone, and that is specifically authorized with a special exception. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. There will be less traffic present on the site with the closing of the businesses that are there, currently there. And so that will decrease the amount of traffic vehicles and traffic going in and out and off the property. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent property or streets. There are no structural changes to the building, the exterior at all, nothing's going to change. So those systems would stay in place. And with the ten beds, the demand on city services for water and sewer will actually be less than there is currently with the businesses that have been there. The requested use will not create excessive demand for municipal police, municipal police fire protection schools or solid waste disposal services. There, as, as with the prior requirement, there will actually be possibly less demand for any kind of services. Any special provisions for the use is set forth in this chapter or filled. There are no specific special provisions. It's just to convert to a rooming house, which is permitted. The use, requested use will not create hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public nor be detrimental to the use of or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. The neighborhood is boarding houses and apartment buildings and multifamily. So this is in keeping with the same use that's currently present in the neighborhood. And so the proposed location is also appropriate for the requested use. It's part of a rehabilitation program and will be used to provide beds for graduates of that program and will not be open to the public. The requested use is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and with the master plan. It is an authorized use, and it allows for, the master plan allows for a variety of all types of housing. The conditions that we would put on add the signage condition here, Steve, about removing the...
Yeah, that would be to make the modifications as requested based on the approval by the planning department, that it's appropriately done in a manner. And that the use of the building, if it changes the use file, that it's currently under the current ownership, with any new ownership, that they should come before the board again for review. The... There was one other... Oh, and that it goes through all the fire safety inspections and permitting and stuff like that. Due to the addition of the ten people in there, wanna make sure the fire safety code is followed. And that would be my condition with it.
To make the motion with, with those conditions.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
All seconds up. All seconds up.
You gotta unmute.
All seconds up.
So, let the record indicate, Mike seconded any discussion? There being none, I'll take a vote. Roland?
Yes.
Gail? I didn't hear you, Gail.
She's abstaining.
She's abstaining. Mike?
Yes, for approval.
Ori?
Yes, for approval.
Okay, so it passes four, four, one abstention, and none against. So, you pass, please see planning at your convenience for the permits or whatever it's necessary, and good luck.
Steve?
Go.
It, it's not that I can't hear you. It's, I can't hear you over the rustling of the paper. When, that's, that's the thing. I think all comes from the same thing. If during the presentations, you guys could mute your microphones, that would help tremendously. I didn't hear a word he said because of all the paper rustling.
No, that's fine. I understand that, and that's why I was trying to make sure, A, you can hear us, and then B...
It's plenty loud enough. In fact, you know, I hear the voices at the same level as I hear you guys' voices, as I hear the paper rustling.
Okay.
Okay, but...
Cool beans.
And some of it, too, is not the paper. It's your mics on your shirt.
And there's that, too. Whatever it is, the background noise comes in at the same volume as everybody's voice. So I'm not hearing it, and I apologize for that. I don't recall that we had that problem the last couple of times, but whatever it is, you guys got it passed, and I'm good to go.
Okay. All right. Off we go. We're now going into the public hearings. And the first one in the public hearings is gonna be application 2020-0014SE, 16 Birdie Way Special Exception Application. Applicant is requesting a special exception. This is a rehearing, by the way. Applicant is requesting a special exception from Article 7, Section 235-41M to allow short-term lodging. If the applicant would...
Okay, Steve, I'm gonna interject here. Yesterday, we did receive an email from the applicant. They have withdrawn the request for special exception, and they have also withdrawn their short-term lodging application. They're not gonna pursue it.
Okay, so, anybody that was in the wings waiting to hear about the, that application on 16 Birdie Way, it has been withdrawn, and with that, we shall move on.
And Mr. Chair, I'm gonna let the record indicate that Michael Delvecchia arrived at 7:40.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Michael. Okay, next on the agenda is application 2020-0032, variance 175 Mechanic Street. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-48E2, number two, to allow for additional paved parking within ten feet of the rear boundary line. If the applicant is present, please bring them up and just hear how we can help them.
I see Mr. O'Coin's hand raised.
The, here we are. I can see all of you. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So thank you for giving me this time. I don't have a lot to say. I've got two issues with the parking. There's a little map, I think you might have seen. The rear half of our parking lot was dirt and grass for the past fourteen years. As you know, this area, we share parking with the post office, with Fratello's, all of that. And people, when they park, don't know the boundaries from hardtop to dirt. And so we have lost our lawn several times. Mud season for us means no handicapped access. It gets that bad with the mud. So last year, we made an investment. We had it all dug up. They put in stone, they put in that sheet stuff for drainage, and they put in ledge pack. That turned to soup the first three days of rain that we had. And we just, we just saturated. The ground is saturated there. So we talked to Brian Paving. We thought we might use that porous pavement. They said we wouldn't get two years out of it in, in our situation. So Dean from Planning came over, took a look at the parking lot with, with another guy, can't remember his name. And it happened to be the third day of rain, heavy. And the first thing they saw was this beige-colored water running into their sewer system. And they both kind of looked at each other and nodded their heads like, this is unacceptable. So I guess what happens is, at the top of Clinton Street, there's an old stream up there. It's been diverted to a culvert. But the underground, old stream used to run right out, right under our building. And when it rains heavy, the water runs underground, saturates the ball field, and saturates our lot. And so we'd just like to eliminate that, eliminate the runoff that goes into the water system. It would help us getting handicapped access there to the back ramp. And that's about it in a nutshell.
Okay, do we have any questions of the applicant?
I have a procedural question, Mr. Chair.
So I... So basically, all we're trying to do is take where the park, the paved parking lot stops and finish that off up to the boundary line and make that better accessibility for both cars and humans.
Absolutely.
And that's about it.
How, does he address the green space requirements? I know there's not much in through there.
Yeah, so that was the issue, and the two guys that came from, from the city. So I don't know if you can see this little map here I've got.
Yeah, I can, thank you.
Okay, so, so this is what's already paved?
Hold it up a little bit higher. There you go.
Yeah, okay. This is paved, this is not, and this is not. So this is the part that's totally saturated. And in the discussion with them, they said it would be better for drainage to have hardtop and receive clean drainage than what they're getting off of my supposedly green space. Because it's so, it's so washed out, it's not doing the job it's supposed to do.
Okay.
And, and I'm sure that they'd give you that opinion, because they said they would. You know, they see it as the better solution. And so we're not doing, we're not hardtopping this space over here. We're leaving that green. We've got the planters and stuff like... Uh, we've got the planters and stuff like that around the building, and, uh, so-
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a point, the 235-36B that they're requesting the variance from is the green space requirement, they're also requesting the variance from the 10-foot setback. So, just for clarification, I think that's what Gail was looking at.
Yes.
So, just, just to kind of put the point a little finer, the, the applicant has stated the, the situation correctly, and, um, the, the app, the application basically to go below the required green space, they're probably not meeting the requirement already, and they're gonna go to virtually zero green space, or very close to zero green space. Uh, however, um, the, uh, the other gentleman at the meeting, or Ian, and the applicant was, was the, was Wes Anderson, the Department of Public Works. His, his preference in this situation would be to convert what is now the ground to pavement to reduce the sediment that's running up their parking lot, and into the storm drain. So, he'd rather have more water, clean water, uh, going into the storm drain, than to have a mixture that he's gotta come out periodically and, and, and pump out the, uh, the catch basin, uh, because of, of sediment. And, you know, looking over the situation, DPW in particular, uh, and I, and I can affirm that it would be a better situation to just have a pavement, you know, this is one of the unique, unusual situations that just warrant that situation, so, uh, the fact that they go to whatever it could be, 95, 86% coverage, um, is, is a, is an overall benefit, uh, to the city, and it certainly will help the, the applicant as well, obviously.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
Only one, does he plan on taking up what was put in two years ago, or, or is he just gonna throw a level of pavement on top of what's- or does it matter? I guess I don't know.
So, actually, Bryant Paving came down and, and took a look at this, they've been working with me all along, and they said, what I did for them was basically put in about the best base that I could put in for them. So, uh, it saved me some money, they don't, they, all they have to do is level that all out and get it pitched, um, so that it runs in a certain direction, ends up in a certain place, uh, but it's a, it's a, a great base, a great base for what they're gonna do, so.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions at this moment? If none, I'm opening it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please acknowledge, and Dean will acknowledge and bring you into the conversation. Let the record indicate that no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore, I will close it to that part of the meeting and bring it to the public, I mean, back to the board. Any other questions? Any closing comments, sir?
No, just thanks for your time and consideration on this, I've been trying to deal with this for a long time.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion. I think this does bring in a, a special situation where it's tied in between two of the buildings. Yes, the green space is probably lost, but for the greater good of the general public, and with the wastewater system and stuff like that, by not adding more, uh, other hard material into our, uh, sewer system than is necessary. And since it's beside a park, you know, you have the additional green space of the park to help, uh, as one might say, off-site, offset, you know, even though it's, uh, city-owned and stuff like that, but its proximity would accept some of the water if there was that much rain and stuff, it would help being absorbed into the grass and stuff of the park, to the backside of that, uh, at least from what I can see, but not being a total expert on drainage and whatnot, but that's my thought, anybody else got any thoughts, please?
My same thought, um, in fact, I, I would say that the poor drainage is probably the hardship in this case. I mean, he could use that as his physical hardship, as running with the property, he chose not to. But that is a legitimate hardship, if it's, you know, we can't take away what was done 150 years ago. So, this is what, these are the cards we've dealt with, and I think he's drilling with it as best he can considering this situation.
Thank you.
I think I have to agree with you, Gail, and that was kind of like what I was trying to indicate through that, is that that's the best they can do to help solve that problem from all appearances, and it sounds like they just reached out to all the right people in trying to come up with different alternatives to making this solution so that it wasn't just blindly done, it was done with everybody's, uh, input that is available. Any other input discussion? With that, like to entertain a motion?
32, 4175 McCarran Street, they're looking, uh, for a variance from 235-36B, and that is a reduction in the green space that they have available. And they're also looking to have a variance from 235-48E2, and that would set the setbacks, uh, closer to the, uh, to the fence line. How far is our setback? We say it says inside the 10 feet. This is, uh, granting the variance would not be considered as public interest because we're going to improve the amount of sediment and other things that wash from the parking lot now into the sewer systems. Spirit of the ordinance is observed because this makes it easier access to ADA and, um, or people going to church. Uh, once again, uh, granting the variance would do substantial adjustments because of the, uh, providing ADA access. Uh, it will not diminish the surrounding properties, it will, again, clean up the, uh, parking lot in the condition that it's in now, and once again, help our sewerage. For the hardship, we certainly have seen that it is impacting the city's, um, drainage and stuff, and also having clean access to their church parking lot. And it's reasonable, and well within the form of what we would expect of our society.
Second.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion of the motion? There being none, I'll make a roll call for the vote. Roland?
Yes, to the motion.
Gail?
That's to the motion.
Mike?
Yes.
That would be-
The other Mike.
Affirmative, and the acceptance of the motion.
And, uh, Ori?
Yes, to the motion.
And Steve, yes. Mike, you're on the sidelines for this one, I apologize. Okay, so it passes, um, so good luck with your, uh, dry land, hopefully, that you'll have in the future, and may you have a good day.
Thank you so much, I know.
Okay.
Want me to wait till you open it, or, this is the pause?
Yep.
Want me to wait till you call it?
Uh, yeah, I'll go ahead and make the call for you. Alright, uh, next application is, uh, Application 22-2020-0033, it's a variance at 81 Island Drive. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-35B to allow for the construction of a balcony over existing patio and the rear setback. And before I ask the applicant to start, uh, Ori will be stepping aside as she ha, cannot, uh, preside on this issue with a conflict of interest, and Mike, uh, if you would please, uh, be in on this one as a voting member. Okay, and with that, if the applicant would please, uh, go ahead and speak and tell us how we can help you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Paul Fitzgerald for the applicants, Jay and Karen Allen, can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, I will present briefly tonight, you've already had a long, relatively long, uh, evening, uh, on a nice evening. Uh, we've put in the, uh, material in the application that we think is necessary to meet the criteria. What I wanted to take my time orally this evening to go over with you is to explain a little bit more, uh, the situation, which I think will make it a little easier for the decision. What we're looking for here is to, uh, basically complete the project, if you will. And what I mean by that was, when this building was constructed, there were sliders put on the second floor. Those sliders, at the present time, go nowhere, uh, which leads Mr. Allen and I to the conclusion, uh, although we're not certain of it, but it leads us to the conclusion that the deck was probably intended as an amenity to begin with when the, the building was originally constructed. On the lower level, there is a ground-level patio, which is immediately below the area that we are going to construct the deck with your permission. The deck will not extend any further out over the existing patio, that patio is going to be rebuilt, it's in need of maintenance, it needs to be repaired. So, it'll be rebuilt, but the point that I'm making is, there's not going to be any loss of green space, even though we're talking about the second floor, there's not going to be any additional coverage, uh, issue as a result of this. If you look at the photographs that we submitted to City Hall, that Mr. Allen and his wife took of the buildings up there, you will see that the, uh, not only this building, but other buildings have similar structures, and in fact, Mr. Allen, although not being absolutely 100% certain of it, believes that he may be the only, uh, unit in the complex facing the lake that doesn't have a deck. That, again, leads us to the, the, kind of, the assumption that maybe this was intended at the beginning of the entire process and just not built. Uh, but the point here is that, uh, I think, as I said, we meet, uh, all of the, uh, the requirements under the ordinance. This would provide an amenity that all of the neighbors have. It certainly would not decrease property values, and in fact, would probably increase property values because it would increase the value of this particular unit. It would make for more uniformity within the project itself, uh, and for those in the reasons that are stated in the application, we would ask your favorable consideration of this this evening. Uh, as you can see, Mr. Allen has joined us, uh, and is available for, uh, questions or comments as well, if need be. Uh, but that, in essence, is our presentation, uh, subject to any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant? I have one. Will the, uh, second-story deck go across both sliders?
That is the intention. I'm sorry, are you answering, Paul? I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, the intention was to go six foot out, and from corner to corner to encompass both sliders.
And the documentation, uh, even though the city has nothing to do with it, was, uh, the application approved by your homeowners association?
It has not been yet, um, initially, I was under the assumption, uh, and explained that I should get it approved by the city first, um, at which, for the time, I found out that I could submit it to the board, which we have submitted the package to the board. They have, they have no reply on it yet.
Just to let you know that, uh, one bearing has nothing to do with the other one, as far as if the city accepts, says that you can do it, and your association doesn't, that has, one doesn't trump the other, in other words, what I'm saying. Okay, so as long as you're clear, we can't tell your association that you can do it, we can just give you permission to do it, but that's all the legal grounds that stands by the city.
Understood completely.
We understand that, Mr. Chairman, and, and we wouldn't proceed without the association's approval, which we expect shortly.
Now, I noticed that this is close to the water, do you need any special water permits, uh, from the state doing something like this?
We don't believe so because of what's already there, we're certainly going to check that before any construction goes forward.
We'll be adding that if it's approved as, uh, part of the approval, that any state permits would be required, uh, before construction. Now, uh, this is for Dean, does it cover the 50-foot setback on the lake that, uh, is required by the city to get an exemption from, for building?
They are beyond the 50-foot, and because they're more than seven feet above the ground, uh, and, uh, they're gonna have pervias underneath, then it, uh, doesn't qualify anyway.
That's 50 feet from the water?
Just barely.
Wow. Pictures to see, well, the picture I'm looking at, I guess, is the people sitting out on the, on their patio. Is that the same deck, or is that a different deck?
That's the, the lower patio.
Your patio is the vacant patio?
Um, the patio is with the one with the people, that's the same patio, that is correct.
That's your patio, and then this one is not?
That is that same patio.
Because that picture sure looks like it's close to the water.
And you would be right, I, I, when I measured it this afternoon offline, I measured the wrong house, but the, because it's seven feet or more above the, of the ground, uh, the 50-foot does not apply. From, from the city standpoint, still, uh, needs whatever shoreline protection permits that they may need from the state.
Even if it's to say they don't need one by the state, the state should indicate in writing one way or the other, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that if it is approved would be, to let y'all know ahead of time, would be part of the conditions. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Go ahead and unmute. Yes.
When I look at the picture with all the people sitting here, and my question is about when we put this deck on, is it going to be enclosed at all? Like the porch beyond it?
No.
Or is it just going to be open to the patio with a deck in roof above it? Is it going to be a roofed deck?
If it'll be just the deck, it will be the same underneath, no enclosure, no roof above the deck. It has to be, I understand, permeable.
So you're not installing any drainage on the deck itself? The natural drainage of the deck will be the drainage?
That is correct.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'd like to go ahead and open it to the public and ask if anybody from the public wished to speak for or against this application, please acknowledge. And Dean will bring you up so you can have a few words.
Yeah, we don't have anybody online.
I'm going to go ahead and do my little count. And that to record indicate no one from the public wished to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board. Any further questions? Any closing comments?
No, thank you for your time. As I said before, I won't repeat in detail, but I think we meet all the requirements under the ordinance. There is no further imperious coverage. We're certainly aware of the fact that we need to deal with potential state permits and the condo association, and we'll do that.
All right. With that, I'd like to go ahead and close it to the public and bring it back to the board for discussion. I think it seems to be kind of reasonable in its aspect. It looks like it would be a benefit to being able to improve the enjoyment of the outside of their unit. It looks like it catches the afternoon sun, which is probably the hottest part of the day and kind of curtails the enjoyment of that lakefront view and the fact that it could provide some shading and stuff. So. I, it's about all I have. Anybody else have any comments? Gail, you good?
Oh, seems almost like a punishment item that didn't get done, but I can't comment on that really. I mean, I don't know that for a fact, so I'm fine with it.
Okay, with that, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we grant a variance. Oh, I don't have the number information. What is the number of the application? I apologize. Okay. To grant, to permit a six-foot by 23-foot balcony over an extending patio to be built within the same footprint with the conditions that Attorney Fitzgerald agreed to, namely that the Shoreline Protection Act is not there, is, 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 those standards are kept. Creating a variance would not be contrary for the public because it would be in keeping with other similar neighborhood structures. If the variance is granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the balcony would apply appropriate and regular second home use of the property. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because otherwise, the applicant is being denied an amenity enjoyed by the others in the same zone. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because it's, they just wouldn't. In fact, the likelihood that they improve is reasonable assumption. And the unnecessary hardship cited in this place is Section A, which is there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general public and purpose of the ordinance with the specific provisions of this application. So there are other neighboring properties that aren't going to be affected really in any way at all. And it's a reasonable use of a waterfront second home.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion of the motion. There being none, I'll make a roll call for the vote. Roland?
Yes, to the motion.
Gail?
Yes, for approval.
Mike Foot?
Yes, to accept the motion.
Mike Novak?
Yes, to accept.
I didn't pronounce that right. I apologize.
Sorry, not Steve.
And Steve, yes. So the motion passes. Enjoy your future. Make sure you do your state and other due diligence and have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I seem to have lost my agenda. Found it. Other business? Dean, you have anything?
With the withdrawal of the Verde Way application for the short-term lodging, I still think that there is a need to convey to the board some of the points that would have been made to the board by the legal counsel that was going to represent the city council in the rehearing, if the rehearing had occurred. So we're going to work on that. And I'm not sure what the exact timeline will be. It might be ready for the next meeting. Or, and my intention would be to do it before the next meeting. So, you know, we could send it out. You'd have a chance to read it and then ask questions or whatever at the next meeting. That would be my plan. You know, you know how plans are sometimes, so don't hold me to being ready for the next meeting. But that's certainly what we're trying to do anyway. I think it'll be a iteration of some of the points that have been made previously, particularly the detailed letter that you received from former Mayor Angler. But I wanted to put that into a formal kind of tutorial, if you will, or explanation type of situation, just so that you have. So we covered the bases that would have been covered if the rehearing had happened. And the other thing I wanted to mention was keep your fingers crossed that this will be the last meeting that we have to do by Zoom for the next meeting in July that will be back to a kind of more of a normal situation. We don't normally draw a large crowd at this, at this board. So I think that we can, you know, with masks and social distancing, that we can accommodate the, you know, the usual number of applicants and maybe one or two members from the public that might be interested in a, in a particular application. And we can just kind of spread people around. If we have to, we can stage people in the next conference room or whatever. But that's my plan at this moment. Again, who knows what's going to happen in the next, you know, three, four weeks with everything that's going on, but that's the plan right now.
Anybody have anything else they wish to bring before the board? There being none, I would be seeking the last motion for the night.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.